Good evening, bonsoir. Bienvenue à la réunion plénière du 11 septembre. Welcome to the committee of the whole on September 11th. Ms. Parker, do we have any declaration of conflict of interest?
There were no conflict of interest declared.
Perfect. So we have eight presentations this evening. Donne une huit présentations ce soir. So I will ask everyone that's presenting to try to please keep it 10 minutes to 15 minutes because you'll probably have questions from council. I know it's not a lot of time, but 15 minutes each is two hours. Donc je demande à tous ceux qui présentent ce soir, essayez d'être en dedans de 10 à 15 minutes si possible, surtout s'il y aura certainement des questions du conseil. Donc prenez ça en considération parce qu'on va être ici quand même pour une petite recousse. Council, there is no decision to be made tonight. We are just accepting all the presentations and then we'll have a discussion afterwards. On va commencer avec la première présentation, the Nepisiguit Sports Lodge by Curtis Bennett.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for taking the time. I'm here representing the Nepisiguit Sports Lodge and the Quality Inn motel. The our sporting event here is probably the biggest event of the year is snowmobiling, brings in the most money. Our motels are getting very full and there is not a lot of access everywhere. And the Quality Inn doesn't have proper access to their motel because there's a brook that runs behind the civic center that the water runs pretty good and we can't get in there with brush and stuff to fill it and freeze it till late in the season. And it's not very nice for the snowmobilers and a lot of the snowmobilers are going other places because they can't get into Atlantic Holes or Danny's because they're full. So maybe they go to Murmurechee, go to Hamilton, go to Evanston. But the Quality Inn is starting to get some of that business now, quite a bit, much more. The bridge is coming in, they thought it would be 20,000, but it's coming in at 23,000. We have three more bridges to do. The one going up to the line to the lodge that would bring all the travel back and forth, the snowmobilers in and out of Bathurst. We just got our estimate today and it's $48,000 to fix the bridge. And it's $6,000 to fix a couple of spots along the highway so the snowmobilers can get through there. There's a few bogs that had the same problem. We put pallets and stuff in, but when it starts to melt, it's very dangerous. The snowmobilers are getting hooked in on pallets. So we're looking for help. We can't afford to do the trail. We're bringing it up to the federation to see if there's any help there, but I thought that maybe between council and maybe Quality Inn, we can get in. We have a quote, I have it here from Schiller Lines, and it's $23,000 to put the pipe in and the gravel and address that.
Mr. Bennett, I know we met last week, so we talked about you coming to present to council so you can... Snowmobile is definitely one of the sports that is quite busy in the winter.
Oh, yes.
And that trail as well, as it goes back towards, it gives access to Casey Irving as well, right?
Correct, that's right. That's the newest trail in.
Okay.
Yes.
So the ask, was it the half of the 23,000 or the 23,000 that you're asking council?
Really, we're asking for the 23,000 because we're gonna have 50, probably 70,000 to put out on our own.
Okay. And ideally, you would like this done before winter, so that would be for this year's budget.
Correct. And the contractor can as well.
Okay. And you have had it contracted out and everything. Okay. Perfect. Do we have any questions for Mr. Bennett? Councilor Burnett?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. What about the other hotels, the one downtown, you used to get the traffic, they come across the ice in the colder part of the year?
Yeah.
And then there's the other one up on St. Peter Avenue, sometimes they would come in the back.
Yes. If the water's frozen.
If the water's frozen, yeah. So you guys used to groom right down to the water and then they would go across even sometimes. Are you planning that at all?
We still groom down to the water behind these stevers.
Okay.
We groom right there to the water.
Yeah. And do you have recommendations for snowmobilers coming in if they want to get to the hotel downtown, when they can do it? Or do you have somebody who can test that?
Yes, we do.
We do?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, because to be fair to all hotels.
Oh, no, correct, correct.
It would be good to have access.
There's enough to go around.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we've got your request for 23. We definitely will be following up with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next presentation will be the Bathurst Heritage Trust Commission by Nancy Coligan-Brunner. Hi, Nancy.
Hi, everyone. I'm basically gonna read so I can go faster. I'm Nancy Coligan-Brunner. I hold the volunteer position of President of the Bathurst Heritage Trust Commission, Inc. Most of you know or have been a part of the museum, but for those who don't know, the Bathurst Heritage Trust Commission was incorporated the 28th of March, 1989, 34 years ago, and has been in its current location at 360 Douglas from more, it's more commonly known as the old library building, since 2004. So that's 19 years. Our museum is operated and managed by a dedicated group of volunteers. We currently have 10 volunteers with two others set to join our group very shortly. I just wanted to mention some of our community involvements within the last little bit. Collaborated with Dusset Hennessy House for a play about the Phantom Ship in the Squando. We had four evenings, 380 people attended, standing room only for all four evenings. We took part in hospitality days with our Vintage Hat Tea Party. We have card parties every Tuesday evening. It began again on September the 5th. Setting up puzzles and games in our community room for Wednesdays and Fridays draw-ins for the seniors. We just finished a display on Danny's Speed Bowl. We have on Friday, this coming Friday, the Fourth Degree Nights are holding a special event because the Fourth Degree no longer exists, so it's a closing of that. We have a new Acadian exhibit on the 19th and 20th. It's a much larger exhibit than we've had before. And we have the Special Olympian Bowlers coming for registration at our museum on the evening of the 20th. We also have the Scottish AGM on September the 30th. So that's just a little over a month, so you can see how much we're so much more involved in the community than ever before. So Florence Gray has been incredibly busy with our archives and genealogy department. She handles requests for information, local, national, international, and you'd be surprised how much ancestral connection is to Bathurst. The Multicultural Society has been in several times for French tours and they've given lovely praise to Robert Roy for his excellent tours. I've mentioned about the new Acadian exhibit coming up that's put on by Mercedes Pico, Suzanne Hanna, and Jean Guy Duga. And all through the summer, Rene Dusset has been decluttering and refurbishing our displays. He's got the eye for it. He's not only one of our directors and volunteers, but he brings a lot of attention to the Bathurst Heritage Museum through his Facebook site, Bathurst New Brunswick Genealogy and Old Photos. That site has 16,700 members. So it does give a lot of advertisement to us. Tim Boyle has been cleaning up our paper mill room and also posts pictures from the museum. So on any given day, I could be the president, the snow remover, the janitor, or tour guide. But my most important job is fundraiser, whether it be grants or coaxing others to pry their wallets open. So we don't have any paid staff other than the summer students. We received a grant from the museum services in Fredericton for two students, but we have a need for three students, so the additional salary for the one student is absorbed by the museum this year. Our largest expense remains hydro. We have equalized billing of $1,182 a month, and we hold our breath when the reconciliation comes in February and we hope it's been a milder winter. We try and close from mid-December to mid-February to lower the heating cost, but this past winter, '22 to '23, we've had to stay on a lot longer to complete our artifacts, the work that we were doing on it, so the cost was higher. We did receive almost 5,000 from the Bathurst Curling Club as one of their nonprofit organizations. We had a project of turning one of our offices into two workstations. We replaced our electrical plant panel and added more outlets. We got rid of the start of some black mole and replaced inadequate insulation in that room. So we are very grateful to the Bathurst Curling Club as their contribution to the nonprofits allowed us to cover the complete cost of that reno. So we have five major projects on the horizon. We need a chairlift that will allow our seniors access to all three levels of the museum. We need to upgrade both washrooms to wheelchair accessibility washrooms on our lower level. We need to upgrade the fluorescent lighting to LED lighting. We need to find an alternative source of heat from our 56-year-old hot water furnace. We need to find solutions to replace our 56-year-old carpeting and linoleum. Of course, we know that we have to reach and search for grant money for these upgrades, but there is generally a portion that has to be paid by us. We also know that this will be a multi-year endeavor. So just for this upcoming year, don't expect that it'll be this cost next year, but for this year, we appreciate the council's financial support in the past and we respectfully request $12,000 to help with our operational costs for 2024. Thank you for your time and attention.
All right. So the 12,000 is for 2024 that you're requesting?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any questions, comments? No? It's a beautiful museum. It is. And I know that the Multicultural Association with their new families that come in, they go visit and they're in awe, and actually sometimes there's a connection that they realize that, you know, there's parts of history there that they are part of that. So it is, it's beautiful. If you haven't been there lately, it's, they've made so many changes and it is beautiful.
We actually have, our vice president, Charles Ramsey, coined a phrase and he said, "It's really our DNA of the region."
Yeah.
Because it shows the life, both the work and the leisure of the past and the current, actually, still.
Yeah. And it says a lot about all the volunteers like you that are there all the time for free.
Well, I retired nine years ago, and retirement does not mean that you don't work. It just means you don't get paid. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. No, I think it's... Notre troisième présentation vient de la bibliothèque par Miranda Angelski. J'espère que j'ai bien dit. Did I say her name right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Miranda Angelski-Winmill, and I've been the Director of the Bathurst Public Library since June of 2022. The Bathurst Public Library has been operating since 1967 as a cornerstone of the New Brunswick Public Library system, however, it's been in this building since 2003. We offer essential services and access to information to the entire community of Bathurst and surrounding areas. We also happen to be one of the busiest libraries in the Schiller region. If we look at our circulation alone, we usually have 34,997 people come into the library over the year. That's our traffic. It's the highest in the entire region. Therefore, we're gonna be requesting money for services to help our programs and our daily services for the library. This year, we'll be requesting a total of $22,287. The majority of that will be for programs and offering services for the community. However, there's just a few items I'd like to speak about specifically. The first being our printer. Our printer has not been, we haven't gotten a new printer for 10 years, since 2013, and it has not been working correctly since I've been here. We print every day. It's our most popular service that we provide to the community. It's also our only revenue that we can bring in in order to be able to fund our programs ourself. We'll be requesting $7,000 for a printer. The current printer has not been replaced for 10 years, and its parts have been discontinued and are no longer available, and it's also causing a high service cost. This new printer will also have a bigger scanning plate, which will allow library materials to actually be scanned correctly. As of right now, we can't complete every request that patrons have, given our printer that we currently have. Our next big-ticket item would be having the library repainted. So some of you may know, in December 2022, we got new flooring, and the community has responded very positively to our flooring. We get a lot of compliments, they really enjoy it. It's brought some new life back into the library. So we would like to request $2,800 for paint, which would be a total of 21 gallons of paint for the library. The library has not been painted since it was here in 2003. That's now 20 years, and with our new floor, we'd like to be able to have a bit more of a vibrant space, a space for those to come in and feel comfortable and really stay a while. And we require $500 for painting supplies. However, labor costs would not be needed. And that, those are the items I'd like to discuss the most.
All right. Perfect. Yes, it is, the floors are beautiful.
Yes. They, everyone loves them. We've had no complaints.
Oh, yeah. With the carpet, it had its time.
Yes.
It certainly did.
Yes.
All right. We have Deputy Mayor Anderson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a quick question for you. You talked about like the amount of visitors that you have throughout the year.
Yes.
Do you guys keep track of if the people going through the library are solely from Bathurst or if they're from the outskirts?
So we don't actually track exactly where they're from. We just have people walk in the doors. So I can, we track how many people come in and out, but not specifically where they're from. We can't do that necessarily with the way that we record our traffic right now. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. So it's duly noted. We have it written there and we will follow up.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, sorry. Councilor Burnett.
Thanks, Madam Mayor.
I was only looking on this side.
That's fine. I just want to commend you on the programs that you offer. Being a grandparent, I have my grandkids in there often when they come to visit. And your section for the children is excellent and the activities you have in that little back room for them to keep busy is excellent, and the staff that you have there are very, very helpful and are very kind to the young people. So again, thanks for that section as well.
Well, thank you so much. We're proud of the services that we offer to the community and we want to continue to offer the best that we can. So thank you.
They actually have, you have healthy snacks too at the entrance. Have you seen those?
We do.
It's, that is impressive. I come into work and I check in and I'm like, it's all there, and people don't take more than what they need?
No.
Don't just say?
They don't take more than what they need. We get it once a month, every month, and I can tell you, once we put it out, they don't last long.
Is that what Eat Fresh?
Yep.
Okay. So they give you the bags for free?
They do. So we have a grant through them, and so they funded that project as well as Petit Rocher and Beresford Libraries also have that every month. And we put it out and it goes almost immediately. We've never thrown a single item of fruit or food out, not once, so.
Yeah, it is. Good job.
Thank you.
On voit aller avec le prochain, Club VTT Chaleur par Daniel Rieu. Bonsoir, Monsieur Rieu.
Bonsoir, tout le monde. Je suis Daniel Rieu. Je suis un membre de discours de Club VTT Chaleur. Je suis accompagné de Jean-Claude Wallert, Claude NBY, puis Federique Malais Boudreau, le président du Club VTT Chaleur. On est ici ce soir pour répondre à vos questions sur une demande de don qu'on a fait. On est en train de construire un sentier qui va relier nos deux territoires. Vous le savez, on a fait beaucoup de présentations devant le Conseil. Vous savez, on a travaillé, ça fait depuis six ans qu'on travaille, qu'on travaille avec le Conseil de Ville de Batos pour réunir nos deux, nos deux territoires et d'amener le tourist à Batos. On croit vraiment à notre projet, puis on est ici pour vous demander un aide financière pour aider à nous, à financer le projet. Malheureusement, j'ai oublié d'imprimer la feuille puis ça fait plusieurs mois que je vous ai demandé, mais c'est un pourcentage qu'on demande pour, un pourcentage de dons pour le, au niveau du coût total du sentier. Chicheon m'a rappel bien dans ce temps-là, on avait estimé le sentier à 200,000, 250,000 dollars, mais là, plus que ça avance, on pense que ça va coûter un petit peu plus que ça. Mais toute donation est bienvenue puis ça serait vraiment le fun que la ville de Batos s'implique avec le Club VTT Chaleur au niveau financier.
Parfait. Puis, attachez les deux secteurs. Est-ce que vous parlez de quel Bathurst puis?
Nous autres, on a le territoire BNPP, puis le territoire Nepisiguit. Isla Batos sont là des jours pour descendre à Carriquette. C'est faire le tour de la ville. Comme vous savez, vous avez fait un bail au municipal qu'on utilise les rues de la ville. Ça a été passé en troisième lecture. Il nous reste seulement à connecter les deux, les deux, les deux sentiers.
Parfait. Question par Conseiller Brunet.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I have a concern. Were you people cross Merrimarchie Avenue? The trails, we were leaders in getting trails in the province and in our city. We showed the way. But where you come across, I was just in Moncton for the weekend and I was noting that the green trails and the other trails they have, they paint them up so bright that you can't miss them. They've got some colors that they're using now for the green, and I was wondering, is there a code anywhere for the paint and the stripes and the, so when you do have a crossing like a busy four-lane highway like Merrimarchie, that we can make it more visible?
I don't know. I can, I can...
There are codes that we can use. Our color is blue everywhere we go, all around the province. We used to paint ATVs on the crossing with that corridor. I think this year, we will not paint them, but usually we have ATVs there, kind of a silhouette of an ATV. We can just change the color from white to blue because everywhere else in the province, that's what we do. So that indicates generally for the ATVers that anything blue they see, it's their code of color. So maybe next year, we will have to look at this.
Yeah, because the trails I saw on the weekend are fantastic. They jump right out, you know, and then we need the safety of the people that are using those to be our prime concern. So I appreciate you looking into that. Thank you.
We will work this with public works.
Good. Merci.
Councilor Honduras.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. J'ai vu qu'on a fait beaucoup du travail, ça a l'air que ça s'avance bien. Y a-tu une date que ça va être prêt, que l'on pourrait prendre l'initiative de se promener à la ville de Batos?
On aimerait bien vous donner une date, on n'a pas la date.
Une estimation date, 2025, 2026?
Il y a tellement d'imprévu, on peut pas vous donner...
Je vois il a fait beaucoup de travail sur la Ryan, puis ça continue bien.
On travaille activement avec Claude NBY de possibles projets puis on...
Vous allez nous le savoir?
Pardon?
Vous allez nous le savoir?
Certainement.
Je viens de m'acheter un side-by-side.
On va vous laisser savoir. On va vous laisser savoir parce que vous êtes partenaires avec nous, avec nous, Claude NBY.
J'aimerais bien me rendre à Beresford.
Il y a plusieurs, il y a plusieurs personnes comme vous.
Monsieur Rieu, la demande que vous demandez, c'est pour 2024 ou 2023? 24, 2024? Je regarde. Okay. Oui, parfait, 2024. Merci. Oh, un instant, j'ai conseillé le blanc.
Question là-dessus, justement, Madame la maire. Si j'ai bien compris votre lettre, vous demandiez talley sur deux ans. Donc, demandez-vous, 20%? 15 à 20% en 2024 veut dire la moitié de ça en 2024, l'autre moitié en 2025. Ça reste à vous. Ça dépend du projet aussi. Nous autres, on a des budgets qu'on essaie de balancer. Si vous voulez, c'est parti dans les deux ans. On n'a pas de problème avec ça. Si vous le donnez dans un an, on n'a pas de problème. On n'a pas de problème pour le montant que vous donnez, mais on aimerait beaucoup que vous participeriez à financement de notre projet, surtout que c'est dans la limite de la ville puis ça fait six ans que vous travaillez avec nous. Merci beaucoup.
Parfait. Merci beaucoup.
Bienvenue. Merci pour votre temps.
La prochaine présentation, c'est Groupe Action avec Nadine et Carol. Nadine Leblanc et Carol, Karen et Denis Roy. Okay, Nadine et Carol, pas Denis. Pas Denis. So thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing us this time to present. You are aware of Group Action. We've been here before. And the action plan. So now, we're kind of ready to get into the actions, more concrete actions. And so we felt their next step was to hire a consultant to map out the downtown, to not necessarily revamp, but to look at our downtown, there's specialty firms that come in, and they, we've gotten contact with one, and they actually implicate, it's a relief, it's a project that you, they implicate everybody, the citizens, council, stakeholders, so everybody's involved in the project because we do have a history and they need to know the history and they study, and then they, they make a plan for your downtown. And this plan is actually well-done, could be good for another 30 years for the downtown. You do it once, it's done, it's well-done. It would take about a year to complete, and again, if we do this right, we should be good for a long while. We know that you get a lot of requests from different committees. But we think investing in our downtown is very important. The estimate cost of the study is $120,000. We honestly think that we can get 50% covered by ACOA, so we would ask for $60,000 from the city allocated to the budget to 2024. And again, for us, it's an investment because the more vibrant your city is, the more you create people coming into your city, living in your city, and it's a vibrant city, and return in a tax base, a higher tax base. We also understand that your resources are sometimes limited. We are, Group Action is totally committed in helping whomever does the plan, takes on this project, will help out for sure. That's for sure. Thank you for believing in our action plan. We will achieve this goal together. So for this part of the presentation, we're asking for $60,000 for the '24 budget. Okay. Do we have any? And... There's two parts.
The other part is for the trails. So to follow up our presentation we did in May, we would request money to put asphalt on some part of the trail downtown. So if you look at the picture, we would like to have asphalt on the trail on this area on the water. I don't know if you see my cursor?
Yeah.
And the other area would be from here, from Main Street, along Main Street up to King Street there. We are not asking in this area because there is possibility of development, so we don't want to do and redo and undo. So those two areas are 1.5 kilometers of trails that we would like to see asphalt. We were told that the city can have, can have recycled asphalt. We checked with the price, was about $25,000 a kilometer. There's 1.5 kilometers we want. And also, what we're requesting is new paved lines for the trail in this area. When we get here, we're never sure where the trail is, which side, how it connects from this side to the other side of Main Street. It's about the same thing here from Dumarest up to the park. We kind of don't know how to connect the trail up to the park, so we'd like to see painted lines there, as well as on St. John Street, like in the middle, to make eight other pink lines there for bicycle, to connect the bicycle trail from one trail to the other. This is a total of 1.5 kilometers of line, line painting, and we would request $50,000 for that. And this is just an example of what we mean. It's not, nothing fancy, but just enough to indicate what the trail are. So for the trails, we would request $50,000.
Okay. So in a resume, it's $110,000. Requesting. Yeah. Conseiller Leblanc?
Oui, just, et si j'ai bien compris, le premier 60 milles que vous avez demandés, ça c'est bel et bien pour l'étude de faisabilité?
C'est pour l'étude pour le...
Le downtown, puis après ça 15 milles par-dessus pour...
Un petit peu dans la présentation, vous avez eu ce printemps, vous expliquer ce qu'on voulait faire, l'étude nous permettrait de dire comment faut le faire.
C'est parce qu'on avait dit, peut-être ça, on fait un one-way, mais c'est-tu, c'est-tu ça, c'est de ça qu'on devrait faire? Puis, il y a des experts qui existent. Nous, on n'est pas expert. Je trouve que c'est très important de...
Bien compris. Merci.
C'est comme, c'est comme l'étude qu'on est en train de faire pour la piscine, l'étude C'est comme l'étude qu'on est en train de faire pour la piscine, pour n'importe quoi. On n'est pas des experts, on allait chercher les gens qui peuvent nous dire exactement qu'est-ce qui peut être développé, comment le développer dans le centre-ville.
Oui. On est allumé un peu partout, Councilor Noz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thanks for the presentation. What exactly you mean by the mapping of our downtown? Could you explain that?
They come in and they study, they ask, you know, they, there's a forum and town halls. And then once they know our pulse and who we are, then they start going, okay, maybe you should be better doing, closing one main, redirecting traffic. They did Moncton, they did Be Saint Paul, they decided to take one side of the Main Street, close completely to the cars, and put cobblestones, so it's walk, it's more walkable. It makes it charm, a charm city. So they look at everything we have, we have new development coming, they would know that. And then maybe there is a shift of roads, maybe there is your downtown, the frontage, maybe there is a, like Carriquet, when you go to Carriquet, they all have a certain way of, you can't open up a business without following certain things. They'll have that same look. So it's to me more cohesive and to have a, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I've been saying that we should, the Harborview, we should only make it one lane and then on the other side make it parking so you can go walking. Saying that for a while now, but...
Yeah, so even Cannard, like there's a lot of streets that we, you know, but we don't know what the best way to... It's all about connectivity, biking, walking, you live, you play, and you work in the area, and it's all connected.
Yeah, perfect. Councilor Willett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you for your presentation. The $25,000 for the pave, that's just the pave that you're talking about for the recycled pave? Then you...
I'm giving you the money, Mr. Abernathy.
No, that includes having the pave all installed by the city.
All installed.
Mr. Abernathy?
No.
So 25,000 is our hard cost for doing it. So there's a soft cost of city employees, equipment, fuel, everything else as well on top of that.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Councilor Willett? Yeah, okay. Merci, oh, okay, I'm good. Merci beaucoup pour la présentation, bien notée.
Merci.
On fait suivi, puis bravo pour le travail que vous faites, vraiment tout ce que vous avez fait pour faire la présentation, la première raconte qu'on a eue là.
Je veux juste vous dire qu'on se raconte religieusement tous les mois. Moi, je vous crois. Je vous crois.
Okay, well, we're trucking along faster than I expected. I'm jinxing it. Well, our next one is from a group of committee for hospitality days. So I'll be inviting Mike Doucette to come in.
Hello, everyone, my name is Mike Doucette, this is where it gets long now. So we want to summarize hospitality days for 2023 and kind of give some bullet points from our accomplishments for this year. Before I do that, I really want to thank the city. I want to thank you guys, I want to thank the workers in the city for the support we received for 2023. It was a rebuilding year. It's worth noting that our committee was nine members and only one was an original member from years past. So it was a brand-new learning experience for everybody this year. And we definitely had some challenges. And it was you guys and the workers for the city that actually helped us get through the majority of the real tough ones, like our weather event from the Saturday night. So that's a great one, and I want to thank you for that. So just to highlight 2023, our hospitality days had nine days of events this year. So it kind of extended beyond the week. And that was for the fact that we really wanted to focus on bringing hospitality days back to have something for every demographic, for every age group. So we really focused hard on having something for the children, having something for seniors, having something for sporting fans, for music fans. So we ended up with nine days of events, we had 31 separate activities this year. And a lot of those activities happened, you know, they were reoccurring activities, like our amazing race and some of the sporting events that we did were tournaments. So speaking of our sporting events, we actually had a family swim this year. So that was a nice addition. We had softball, volleyball, dart, and golf tournaments, and they all went off very well. They were very successful. For children and families, we had our children's art festival, which was a hit. We had our teen movie night, we had dog shows, we had a family fun fair, and our international intertribal celebration with Pabano First Nations. So that was a good, that was a good group effort there, and it turned out very well. For the seniors, we had our plein air art festival, we had our seniors Olympics held at the Bathurst Curling Club. That was a wonderful event, it was filled from wall to wall, everybody had a great time. We were able to stop by and see that one. The turnout was fantastic and the feedback we got was excellent. So we're definitely going to be hitting that one again this year. We had many other events for the residents throughout the week. We opened with our block party at the O'Bootlegger. And it's worth noting that our block party for the opening of hospitality days was their largest event in their history to date. So that was obviously a good turnout and a good showing. We had many buskers performances. So initially, when we were invited to a meeting at the city to discuss the buskers, it was an astronomical amount of money that the buskers wanted to perform, it was in the tens of thousands. We took the challenge on to try and negotiate something through Bathurst Hospitality Days to get the buskers to come to town. So we ended up doing that and paid for it through our own fundraising. And we took the ball and ran with it there. Our teen idol was kind of a joint venture, it was supported through Bathurst Hospitality Days. And the winner of the teen idol actually opened up our musical events. And she was there to sing the first song Thursday evening, and it was a big hit. And her family was proud, and it was a nice moment and definitely something we would like to do again. We had community breakfasts, we had car shows, we had our food truck village. Our parade was fantastic, we had free musical performances on the waterfront. Other than that, we had our amazing race, which was a definite fan favorite, Saint Isidore Asphalt. And ourselves, Bathurst Hospitality Days, we funded the entirety of the amazing race. We had three headline bands come to town for this year's event. So we had, on Thursday, we had Matilda Ride and Wild Pitch. On Friday, we had Raglan Road, we had Lindsay L., who's the host of Canada's Got Talent, she was in performing. We had Blackjack Billy. And on Saturday, we had Bob Cajun, Glass Tiger, and Big Bad Party Band. And again, the weather event on Saturday was interesting. We pulled together as a committee, we worked hard, the city again, from what I was mentioning before, jumped to our rescue and brought some pumps. And we got working and we ended up getting the festival to continue and the music went on. Our fireworks competition was absolutely wonderful this year. We had two companies, Sky Designs and MAC Fireworks. They equally wowed everybody. We definitely had to have a winner, and there was. So Sky Designs ended up winning the prize. But our budget for fireworks this year was $37,500, which was a tremendous budget for fireworks. I'd like to note that $15,000 of that was sponsored by UniBank. And the other 15,000, well, $15,000 was a private business, Modern Pumps and Metals. So I'd like to thank them for that donation and our sponsorship. And I think everybody in town, it was a fully loaded city, and everyone was very happy with that. The remaining $2,500, we paid through fundraising through Bathurst Hospitality Days. I think this is a very important one. We would definitely love to thank the local business community. We're going to be coming again this year. We created a list, our committee created a list of 265 mid-to-larger-sized businesses in town. And we kind of developed a plan this year, last year, this year, to approach all those businesses and request funding for hospitality days because we wanted to do such great things with hospitality days last year or this year. So we approached 121 businesses. We approached a bit more than 121, but we had 121 separate businesses contribute money to hospitality days this year. So we were, we got donations ranging from $100 to $15,000 from UniBank and Modern Pumps. So they were our largest company contributions. It's worth noting, we received very, very few refusals. And that shows the support of the business community, it shows the support of the residents of Bathurst. So we're very happy and proud of that. We fell short of hitting every business that we had on our list. There's 111 businesses that were not approached. And this is one of the things that we were trying to improve on as a committee for this year. So we're trying to develop a better plan on how to hit each and every business because we did receive multiple businesses that approached us and said, we would have liked, you know, why didn't you come to see us? Because we would have loved to have contributed to the fund. And they made sure that we would go see them this year. So that's a nice thing, so we're definitely going to be trying to hit all the businesses on our list this year. And of course, we would love to thank the city because you guys realized that it was a rebuilding year after COVID and we had some big plans and we, you know, it's a brand-new committee, so it was a leap of faith for you guys to throw the dollars that you did behind it. So we did receive 50,000 in funding for last year's 2023 event. And we appreciate that. And Explore New Brunswick gave us a $15,000 grant as well, so again, that's greatly appreciated. We did some, we had some partnerships formed this year that I think are also worth noting. Bathurst Minor Hockey Association. So we tried to reach out and help and touch as many charities and as many groups as we could. So we formed a partnership with Bathurst Minor Hockey. And we paid through our fundraising to put 20 of the parents from Bathurst Minor Hockey in to get their license to serve alcohol. So we had all the bartenders and the ticketing people provided to us by Bathurst Minor Hockey. And the goal being that the tips raised would go to lower the costs for the children throughout Bathurst Minor Hockey. So we got the big banners printed and let everybody know that that's where the dollars were going. And over the three nights, Bathurst Minor Hockey raised $6,544.60 to put towards their fees for the children, so that was great. But I think the better thing that came from that is they were booked, it kind of sparked something in them. So they went to the bars and they were booked for the Acadian night through the Bootlegger. And they raised more money there as well. Now they're booked for the Chamber of Commerce Gala. They have three bookings for Christmas events. And we know of four that we can count that they're going to be booked for next year. So that will, that's one thing that we brought to the table this year that should greatly benefit, you know, the kids playing hockey in the region. Make-A-Wish Foundation, we raised $1,385 for barbecue that we had during the car show. We raised $1,068 from the pub crawl, so they received $2,453. For Sistema, we raised $2,985. The Sholor Resort Center, they raised, at the children's event, $510.85 plus a truck bed full of diapers and supplies and formulas, etc. Food Bank, for our 50/50s at our musical events, we raised $1,895. And our 4H Club, our local 4H Club, did the admission and barbecue at our horse hall, which was also another great addition to this year, bringing it back. And the 4H Club raised $3,800. So that was, that was great. So there's a lot of charities, a lot of groups, a lot of, you know, good things that were brought out of hospitality days this year. Our softball tournament winners, I'll try and speed this up a little bit, but our softball tournament winners, first and second place, both donated their winnings back to Bathurst Minor Hockey. So they received all the dollars that were given from the committee for the prizes for the softball. It all went back to Bathurst Minor Hockey. We donated $500 to the citizen of the year, which was Audrey Ronalds for this year. And she put that forward to Spirit of Christmas. So Spirit of Christmas is going to have another $500 donation that will be paid forward there. You know what, the list goes on and on, but I'll just hit some of the key ones. We paid $1,200, we bought $1,200 in children's toys and gifts for the kids event this year. And I'm on page three of three. Yeah, this is a great one. And I heard the same event mentioned tonight. So we had 232 attendees to the vintage Tea Hat, Tea Hat Party at the museum. So that was a beautiful thing as well to see that. And I think Melissa had heard that the turnout and the interest is climbing in the museum. So that's another good collaboration there as well. Some things that our committee did is we also wanted to reach out to the other groups in other areas. So we put a float, Hospitality Days put a float in the Festival de la Mer, and we attended their parade. We sold tickets for the block party for O'Bootlegger, so it was, so they could save some dollars there. We attended the barbecue held for City Police. And we co-hosted, I don't know how well that went, but we did it. We co-hosted the radio program on 104.9. So that was a lot of fun, it was the first time doing that, so that went off okay. And we did three interviews on Superstation Radio and two interviews through Thermalwood. And this is a great one as well, Radio Canada, French language, interviewed our summer student. And that interview really sounded well, she did a great job, and we were very, very happy with that. So for this year, I know that it was a large investment that the city made in us last year. But we would love to see the same contribution this year for two reasons. We would like to book our bands. And the deposits are going to be required. We threw close to, very, very close to, a $400,000 event this year. And we paid all our bills, so everything went well. There was a few dollars left over, but we obviously want to do better this year. So we're looking for some funding to pre-book the bands because the bands are getting, you know, scooped up very, very fast. So we need some funding for this year. And then we would like to do the same or better for the fireworks and a lot of the things that we did last year that we would like to improve on this year. So we think that the investment is worthwhile for the residents, for the city. We have some ideas of, you know, there was a lot of lost opportunity in our minds for, you know, the town being so full and, you know, there's not much to do after the fireworks was over. So we're looking at retweaking that and maybe having the business community, you know, participate in that evening. So yeah, that is our funding request, we would like to see the same thing for this year. And we would appreciate it very much.
Well, thank you very much, I can tell you I participated to as much as I possibly could. And then I volunteered all day on the Saturday for the International Festival Intertribal, so that was quite something else. So yes, it was amazing to see all the people and all the activities and everybody downtown, everybody participating.
Yeah.
It seems like it didn't matter what event it was. I mean, even the one you had mentioned with the horse, the horse hall.
Yeah.
It was packed.
Yeah, it was very, very good. And on the package that I sent, we received a letter and email from the 4H Club. And a very, very nice, appreciative email. And there was someone that came forward that said that they would like to contribute to the same event this year and to work with the 4H. And there's talk about bringing the petting zoo and things like that. So there's a lot of interest and it sparked, it sparked a lot of people. So I really see good things for this year.
Good, so I've lit up a little bit everywhere, so conseiller Leblanc?
Merci, Madame Lammers. Thank you, Mike, really, thank you for everything. Appreciate everyone that worked with you. I mean, when our, this is going to be short and sweet, but when our citizens and our businesses, when they come together, I mean, there's a huge positive impact on not just the community, really the whole region.
Agreed.
If I listen to what you gave us as a resume today, this... If I listen to what you gave us as a resume today, this, this is incredible. And I'd just like to thank you, all the volunteers and all the citizens that came and participated from here and from elsewhere. This was great and I can't wait to do it again.
Yeah, we're proud of the turnout and very, very happy with how it went. And our committee was one hundred percent dedicated, focused, and everybody pulled their weight. It was, it was fantastic this year.
Thank you.
Perfect. Counselor Scary.
Mike, committee, you folks did a fantastic, fantastic job. It was, you know, it's, it was a little hard sort of to, to step back a, a little bit and, and, and having, being on council and stuff like that. But, you know, it went into great hands. You guys did a fantastic job. It's great to see the community get involved. And I think what really happened is, as much as we can blame COVID on a lot of things, it had some positive output too. Because people realized that in order to bring a community back, it has to have an event like this. And it generated a whole new interest. And if I had a hat, I should have brought my hat tonight. I would definitely tip my hat. But I think a round of applause is definitely in order for the, the committee because you guys did a fantastic job. And looking forward to seeing what's coming up next year.
Yeah, it'll be good.
Being involved in it a little bit more. Are we allowed to?
Thank you. Thank you.
So we're still lit up. Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Thank you, worship. I, I definitely want to commend the committee. You guys did do a fantastic job.
Thank you.
However, that being said, fifty thousand dollars is a huge ask. And it's not the amount of money that we've typically given to Hospitality Days over the years. We did give one year, I want to say thirty thousand dollars when the tent blew down. Because they ended up being in the whole big time. So for me, like, I appreciate everything that you've supplied to us. I would personally like to see a financial statement.
Sure.
If you have one prepared. I, I think that would be beneficial for us making a decision going forward. So yeah, if you could provide that, maybe send it into Amy Lynn and then she could distribute it to council and we could have that with us for the rest of the budget process.
Yeah, we are nearly complete our official statements. I mean, I have my, my summary Excel version complete. But we have our Sage statements nearly complete and I can forward those to her. And I, you know, it is a lot of money, but if you look at, you know, the fact that we got, you know, thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollar fireworks and, and we have so many events that are for the city and for the public. And, and you see the, the, the level of interest and you see, you know, with, with seniors events. And I, I think it's, it's not a lot of money. If you look at other communities and other festivals and the fundings that go in, I think it's pretty much online with, with the city, our size, with what we're doing with the money. I think it's a good bang for the buck.
I can appreciate that, but, but for me sitting in this chair, I'm spending our taxpayers' dollars. We're all spending our taxpayers' dollars. And we do have a lot of committees that we try to contribute to each year. There's some committees that we're not able to give anything to each year.
Understood.
So for me, it's about having it, and I'm not saying, I'm, I'm not saying this isn't going to happen. I'm just saying I would like to see financial statements to make my decision a little more clear. Because we do have many more committees that, within the city that get turned down on a yearly basis because we just don't have the money.
No, I understand and it's easily given. So no issue there at all.
Perfect. All right. Counselor Handas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to reintegrate what everybody's saying, guys. Mike, you and your committee, I know a lot of you aren't here, but Missy and Chris, could you be stand up and get recognized for what you did? Because this, you know, that hand of, that hand of applause, it was for you guys too. I, I, I feel like Counselor Scary too, that it was kind of a, kind of a setback not being involved. Because we've been involved since the day one. So we've seen with Chris Legace, that's now an employer of the city. We, he started this, his dad started this with Mrs. Wallette. And back in the day, it just was, it was everything that you guys brought forth this year. After two years of festival of not having it properly organized, you guys did a fantastic job.
Thank you very much.
We'd love to see that you guys keep going forward with the same heart and enthusiasm. I made a comment about making sure everything's finished and I got a comment back from somebody saying everything's done. Well, everything's never done. There's always things that you don't foresee. There's a little hiccup, the rain, you know, all that stuff. It's, it's a learning curve for you guys. You did a great job. It went through very well. I, the only thing I wish is that we would have had a, a beautiful Saturday evening.
Yeah.
No rain. I think we would have probably doubled the size of the crowd.
That's coming next year.
But that'll be next year. I do agree that the change in location, from what I can see, what I can hear, people have nothing but praise for the, the change of location. And we, Mike and I were talking about that today. But when you have an outside event, you're kind of at the mercy of mother nature. So, and, you know, if I can preach one thing for this committee and for our citizens is that make sure that you go out and you buy your tickets early. Don't wait till the last minute. Because this money that they generate helps them be able to book better bands and book better events. And so if, everything helps. But if you, if you wait till the day of the festival before you get that money, it doesn't always make it easy for, for the festival committee. And another thing is you guys did an amazing job going to get sponsorship. I think the last number that I heard was like a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, give or take there. So, you know, then the cat out of the bag, but the cat's out there now. So these guys did an amazing job when it came to that. As a city though, as Deputy Mayor Anderson did mention, we do have a lot of big, big projects on the go that we have to try to, you know. But rest assured, I'll support this because my heart's still in it and I've told you before. So I still want to get involved and I still want to be there. So that extra nine thousand that you might, maybe Mike and I can go get that for you. But, you know, just hats off to you guys. You did a fantastic job. Keep up the good work. I just, I just don't want to see a one-hit wonder. I want to see it for ten years there. So.
Well, I don't think.
At least five anyway.
I don't think we're going to have the problem with ticket sales this year because we're looking at stepping up. Not that the bands that were here last year were not a step up. It was, they were fantastic bands. But we're looking at going to the next tier where we, our goal is to sell out early. So I don't think that people will want to sit on their hands this year. I think we're going to make people pretty happy with the names that we're going to put out there. And we expect to sell out a lot of tickets and sell the event out. So I don't think people want to sit this year.
Good. I hope, you know, I hope people do realize and understand that and I'll be the first one at the door as soon as I know who's playing.
Excellent.
Thank you. Just, just to kind of finalize, you know, Hospitality Days has always been part of us. And then, you know, we had Mike and Ricky part of the, the team and they did such good work. And then the pandemic hit. And I agree, you know, once we reopened, it kind of brought the community together. But I think what we need to remember is that, yes, we did invest fifty thousand dollars. But in return, sixty-five hundred went to Bathurst Minor Hockey because of what they gave back to the community. Make-A-Wish Foundation got almost twenty-five hundred. Sistema got almost three thousand dollars. Chalauri Resources, five hundred and ten dollars. Food Bank, almost two thousand dollars. And the 4-H Club, thirty-eight hundred dollars, just because of a festival. It just says how far we can go.
Yeah.
So you certainly, the, the committee gave back to the, all these nonprofit or that we've been trying to help out as well. So.
Thank you very much. And we also paid half the upgrade cost for power for Vickers Field. So that came out of our, our fundraising as well. And that was a direct benefit to the city. So there's a few extra dollars there. It was nearly five thousand dollars that we contributed for the power upgrade.
Perfect. Thank you very much. So question, the amount that you're looking for, is it for twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four?
We would like to see half and half. And if it can't be the, if we can't get what we're asking for, we would like at least that twenty-five this year so that we could book bands.
Okay.
Use it for deposits for booking bands.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Notre prochaine présentation, c'est du centre créatif de Tête de Gauche Nord par Monsieur Charles Como.
Donc, bonsoir Madame Lamarest, les conseillers. Je présente Charles Como pour ceux-là qui ne me connaissent pas. Je suis président du comité récréatif de Nord de la Gauche. Ce soir, qu'est-ce qu'on veut vous montrer? C'est qu'est-ce qu'on a réalisé puis demandé le renouvellement de subvention qu'on a eue l'an passé. Donc, je commence avec la présentation. Dans nos projets réalisés, il y en a eu en deux vingt-trois, vingt vingt-trois, la patinoire extérieure avec un terrain de jeu, le réaménagement. Amélioration au centre. Après ça, les deux, ce serait le revenu généré en deux mille vingt-trois, location de la salle, Barcantine, l'auto au mort, cinquante cinquante, foire d'artisanat, et cetera. En trois, c'est budget d'opération, renouvellement des fonds de la ville, remboursement du prêt CBDC qu'on a. Une hypothèque pour le centre qu'on a rénové. Puis numéro quatre, ce sera les projets futurs. On voudrait faire un sentier de marche en nature tout autour du centre avec une plateforme qui donne sur la rivière Nord de la Gauche pour côté touristique que le monde peut prendre, faire du kayak sur la rivière Nord de la Gauche pour descendre jusqu'à Bathurst. Comme vous voyez, on a une nouvelle patinoire depuis l'an passé. Un investissement qu'on a contribué avec la PK, nos fournisseurs, avec l'SDR. La PK a mis cent cinquante mille dollars, SDR trente-neuf mille. Puis nous autres, on a contribué à vingt-et-un mille pour un projet total de deux cent dix mille. On a dépassé aussi. On a eu des dons du Kidzman Club puis du Rotary Club aussi qui nous a donné des dons. C'est pas là-dessus, mais ils ont fait des dons de l'ordre de dix-sept cent cinquante, je pense, au Rotary Club. Puis Kidzman, c'est à peu près deux, deux mille cinq cents, je pense. Avant et après, comme vous pouvez voir, la patinoire qu'on a aujourd'hui, puis avant, qu'est-ce qu'on avait avant qu'on ait réalisé le projet. Ça fait, c'est une grosse différence, c'est une grosse amélioration. Puis notre but, c'est de faire sortir les jeunes, de venir prendre l'air cet hiver. On a eu un gros succès avec la patinoire. On a eu les joueurs du citin qui sont venus aussi. Les jeunes ont goûté du hockey. Tout l'hiver aussi, on a été chanceux. On a eu une belle hiver là-dessus. L'automne passé, quand la patinoire était installée, c'était la même chose. Ils ont goûté au rollerblade, hockey. C'était vraiment populaire. Mais on voudrait faire des améliorations. Donc, c'est pour ça que le financement est important pour nous autres, notre subvention. Comme on a dit, durant l'année, on a été, vu qu'on avait une nouvelle patinoire, c'est une prenez un soupleuse pour nettoyer la patinoire. On a acheté un téléviseur pour dans le centre. On a réparé les salles de bain. Puis il y a des, les salles de bain seraient à faire plus un faceless d'une manière. Il y a des renovations à venir pour l'an prochain aussi. Puis on a, pour parler, on a eu une subvention de SDR puis la PK pour refaire le plancher. Mais nous autres aussi, on faut contribuer quatorze mille dollars de notre part pour faire le plancher au centre. Nos revenus en deux mille vingt-trois risquent à trente-et-un ou. On a fait, on est rendu à vingt-huit mille huit et soixante-quinze de revenus. Mais on a des dépenses nettes, ça nous donne à peu près vingt-deux mille. On a cinq mille pièces de dépense. Comme vous voyez depuis deux mille dix-neuf, depuis qu'on a rénové les grosses renovations du centre, les revenus, la COVID, on n'a pas échappé à la COVID, nous autres non plus. Nos revenus ont baissé beaucoup. Mais si vous voyez le graphe, on est en constante montée. Le centre dessert toute la population. On a des gens de partout de la région qui viennent nous voir, qui veulent louer pour le centre, la location, la patinoire, le terrain de jeu. On a du monde même de la bock, coquin qui est venue cet hiver pour la patinoire. Donc, c'est vraiment important pour la région, la, la patinoire puis le centre. Puis comme vous voyez, notre budget d'opération, quand vous voyez les coûts, je pense la ville devrait savoir aussi que les coûts sont énormes. Tout a monté. L'estrister, c'est dix mille pièces par année. La maintenance, l'équipement, les permis, téléphone assurance, le quarante-cinq mille qu'on a. Il y a personne qui a de salaire. C'est tout bénévolement. On est un groupe de treize personnes sur comité. Puis comme on dit, on donne petit jet. Tout est bénévalent. Il y a rien. On paye peut-être les dépenses pour déplacement. Mais à part ça, c'est tout du bénévolat qu'on donne au complet. Puis la patinoire, c'est comme je dis, c'est un projet qui était noté en cœur. Moi puis Julie Willek qui est occupée ici ce soir. Mais c'est, c'est ça qui est notre présentation. Puis comme je disais tantôt, le projet futur, on est devant pour parler avec la PK. Puis l'SDR, ils sont prêts. Mais ils m'ont parlé comme ils pourraient ça se du côté touristique, plus la PK. Donc, ce serait à peu près le même design qu'est-ce qu'il y a à Delépoigne. Je pense, descendre, pour descendre, nous autres, notre élévation pour aller à la rivière, c'est à peu près quatre-vingt-dix à cent pieds d'élévation. Mais ça serait un beau projet. Il y a beaucoup moins qui sera intéressé. Puis c'est ça, le financement, c'est comme on dit, si on a quarante-cinq mille, nous autres, nos revenus vont être investis. Il y a rien qui est dépensé ailleurs que pour le centre ou pour améliorer. Comme on a des choses qu'on va améliorer comme une place que les gens pourraient rechauffer l'hiver. Parce que les semaines, le centre est loué, donc ils peuvent pas rentrer au centre. Mais on aimerait avoir un autre bâtiment en train de garder pour un genre de container qui serait adéquat pour que les gens peuvent rentrer puis se rechauffer, s'habiller, pour aller sur la patinoire, des choses de même. Mais comme je dis, tous nos argents, nos revenus qu'on fait, est investi dans le centre. Il est pas mis du côté ou des choses de même. C'est vraiment important. Donc, c'est ça qui, qui est ma présentation. Si vous avez des questions, je peux répondre.
Donc votre, votre demande financière est de combien? Quarante-cinq mille?
Le renouvellement du quarantaine de mille dollars qu'on avait avec la ville depuis la transition qu'on avait avec le gouvernement.
Okay. Ça, ça serait pour cette année ou l'année prochaine?
Pour l'an deux mille vingt-quatre.
Vingt vingt-quatre, okay.
Vingt vingt-trois, qu'on a fait la transition du DSL à la ville était garanti pour cette année. Donc, cette année, on est correct. On a eu les remboursements. On faisait la demande à la ville, les soumet, les réclamation. Puis ça bien fortune et jusqu'à date.
Puis le quarante-cinq mille, ça aiderait pour avoir l'élevation, faire les escaliers pour descendre avec le sentier?
Ça serait, on nous aidait pour le roulement.
Okay.
Pour notre cas operating ou quelque chose de même. Mais qu'est-ce que les revenus viennent? Va en investissement pour les projets futurs.
Okay.
Okay, comme si la PK vient, c'est le projet, on est juste en début de projet. On n'a pas fait d'études, savoir comment ça va être le coût. Mais on imagine cent mille à deux cent mille que ça pourrait aller chercher, faire le sentier. Puis la plateforme pour que les gens pourraient manger table de pique-nique puis garder sur la rivière dans la Gauche. Puis la descente en plus qui irait avec un petit quai avec des kayaks, si on veut louer des kayaks qui peuvent monter la rivière ou descendre rivière.
Okay. Voilà avec Counselor Willet.
Merci Madame Lamarest. Merci pour ta présentation, Charles. J'ai été au centre puis ça vraiment, c'est vraiment une belle job que vous avez fait. C'est vraiment une belle patinoire, c'est un beau centre de jeu. Le centre est vraiment, vraiment bien fait à cette heure. Ça paraît vraiment bien. Félicitations à votre groupe parce que ça a l'air comme tout que vous touchez tourne, tourne à, à du bien. Ça fait que les jeunes ont bien l'air, a vraiment aimé ça. Pas juste les jeunes, tout le monde a l'air a bien aimé ça. Ça fait que bonne chance avec le show pour le kayak parce que je sens que le monde aimerait bien ça et être capable de monter la rivière jusqu'à.
Mais c'est devoir utiliser comme je dis, il y a déjà des gens qui viennent. On a justement une corbe. Il y a quelqu'un qui a installé une corbe parce que le centre veut pas être responsable s'y arrive quelque chose. C'est une terrain. Mais ils ont installé une corbe puis descendent avec une corbe des kayaks à bord de la rivière puis descendent jusqu'au cacique haute. Puis là, ils remontent leur kayak là. Mais comme je l'ai dit depuis deux mille neuf que je suis président du centre créatif, on a suite quatre cent mille d'investi dans le centre comme je l'ai dit. On a fait une hypothèque en deux mille dix-neuf de quatre-vingt-quatre mille avec CBDC qui nous partenaires aussi. Puis nous autres, on a mis un autre cinquante mille plus la SDR pour rénové l'extérieur. Le stationnement a été fait en asphalte. Puis même le soussail, il y a du potentiel. Le soussail est tout fini au complet. Mais le plancher est pas fait. Il y a des, il y a du potentiel qu'on peut développer encore. Les argents comme je dis, c'est dur.
Merci.
Counselor Handas.
Merci Madame Lamarest. J'ai une petite question, Charles. Le continent pour le réchauffement. C'est quelque chose que vous planifiez seulement pour deux mille vingt-quatre ou c'est quelque chose que vous aimerez avoir avant? Y as-tu un coût associé à ça? Y as-tu des chiffres là-dessus?
Julie a commencé à travailler là-dessus. Elle est vraiment dévouée là-dessus. Elle a une bonne partenaires. On a eu des, des estimations. Il y en a un, c'est quinze mille pièces, l'autre c'est cinq mille trois cents. Mais lui, c'est trois mille cinq cents. C'est comme bizarre. Il va seulement avoir du cash en premier avant livraison. Puis pour cinq mille trois cents, je pense pas livrer de Montreal à ici. Je pense pas c'est réaliste. J'ai parlé avec Julie à ma table et elle dit, hmm, ça fait comme bizarre. Mais oui, on aimerait l'avoir pour deux mille vingt-quatre, pour l'hiver deux mille vingt-quatre, que le monde puisse aller rechauffer. Puis des améliorations aussi qu'on veut changer le système de lumière. Qui a, un ancien système de lumière qui nous coûte très, très cher, l'estrister. On pourrait baisser notre facture d'estrister. On a déjà eu des estimations. Mais je pense que la PK qui nous ont dit, qui avait des ordres supplémentaires qui pouvaient nous, nous donner, on pourrait aller chercher des ordres de ce côté-là. Mais on a un pourcentage. on pourrait aller chercher des ordres à ce côté-là, mais on a un pourcentage à mettre dedans pareil, donc.
Si jamais tu pourrais prendre ce coup-là pour nous, peut-être nous le remettre?
Le coût?
De la, de l'emplacement pour la réchauffement, serait le fun de savoir exactement quoi est-ce que vous attendiez là?
Oui, c'est comme je dis, on est en train de travailler là-dessus. Euh, comme je dis, on va vérifier demain avec la PK puis la SDR où sont rendus les financements. Euh, je sais qu'il y a rien sur papier, mais je parle avec une représentante de la PK que oui, ils seront prêts à mettre un pourcentage dedans. Mais on travaille là-dessus, mais comme je dis, dans notre budget, comparaison, il nous reste à peu près dix-huit mille pièces cette année, qui nous reste dans notre budget. Qu'on peut investir, mais on a quatorze mille pièces à mettre là-dessus pour le plancher. De notre part, donc il nous resterait seulement quatre mille pièces pour finir l'année de notre budget là. Il y a une réclamation, c'est notre budget de quarante-cinq mille, je pense il reste dix mille à recevoir la, la ville. De ce dernier, euh, euh, branle jusqu'en deux mille, euh, jusqu'en décembre, euh, de cette année là.
We're good, oui, okay. Councilor Burnett?
Uh, thanks, Madame Mayor. Thanks for your presentation, Charles. We've worked together before.
Yes.
And I want to congratulate you. I was up for the opening of your rink. I was up for a couple activities all, as well as in your center. And one you forgot to mention is that you have pickleball now for seniors, so it's used not only by youth, it's used by seniors as well. Congratulations on that. And I guess it's quite busy with the people I was talking to, you know?
Oh, yes, we are busy. Like I said, the, the renting is going well.
Yeah.
Like I show, in, uh, twenty twenty-three, up to, uh, August 31st, we're up to twenty-eight thousand dollars of revenue. And I, uh, see this week, always, they always send us some the booking and they start picking up also for this we, this fall. And like I said, there's a lot of thing going on there and it's it benefit all the community, not only North-Tête-de-Gauche, like now we're in part of Bathurst. And everybody want to come, uh, we're gonna have a grand opening for the, uh, playground on, uh, September 38th. And that's also, uh, gonna be from eleven o'clock to two o'clock in the afternoon. And we try, me, my, my goal was to give a place to the kid to go out and have fun. And that's what we achieve and I think everybody is happy.
Well, we're really happy you're in Bathurst and especially with your volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Councilor Scarry?
Um, Charles, I, you know, when you, when you're sort of a, not the first one to speak, a lot of things have already been said, but I must compliment you folks tremendously. Actually, the, uh, the opening of the, uh, the rink was my sort of first venture out as a city councilor. And I, I must say, I, I played the, uh, played the, uh, the rec center there many times, doing dances when I was younger, uh, working at the radio station and had a little business as well. Tremendous amount of, uh, you know, the, the place, you, you wouldn't even recognize it. If you haven't been out there in a long time, folks take a trip out. And one of the things that really impressed me the most was the dedication and the commitment that you and your committee have. And, you know, as a city, you know, we're looking at, at ways to, um, to increase bringing people in. This is just one of those assets, a hidden sort of gem that's on the outside of the city that gives people of all ages accessibility to physical fitness, which I may not look like I'm into it, but you know, uh, it's definitely one of those things that keep families together. Um, and with the plans that you guys have, I, I definitely can see that, you know, it is definitely an asset for, for the entire region to bring more people into Bathurst. I compliment you folks, you're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you. And like I said, I'm not alone. We are a bunch, like we're thirteen around the table when we have meetings. And everybody has to speak and give their idea or anything like that. And we appreciate everything like people does. And like I said, people, we went to, uh, one meeting. Two of my colleagues went to one meeting at Danny's last fall, uh, this summer for something, for community, something. And they said, nobody is on payroll? No, nobody is on payroll at the rec center. Everybody is doing as volunteer. And like I said, the only thing we pays, if body use their car or something like that, they have been paid for the commit. And that's it, nothing else.
Mais merci à vous puis merci à toutes les volontaires puis écoute, North-Tête-de-Gauche fait partie de la ville maintenant, ça fait, la demande est là.
Merci.
On va vous écouter, on va vous revenir, merci beaucoup. Our last presentation will be Victoria Enhancement Committee Incorporated by Mark Willet. I wonder if that's relation to our Mr. Willet? No clue.
Thank you, Madame Mayor, members of council. Uh, my name is Mark Willet. I'm the president of the Victoria Park, uh, Enhancement Committee. And I want to thank the city for supporting us in the last year. And by picking up the, our garbage, mowing the lawn in the park, and donating five thousand dollars last year for our operating budget. And this year, we've, uh, we've redone, um, a few flower beds, just a few slides there of our park. We've, uh, we've done a few flower beds in the, in the park. Um, we've improved our community garden, that's part of the park. We, uh, install a seven raised beds, flower beds, to be able to have the seniors and people with mob, uh, mobility issues be able to participate in the community garden also. So we've done that. Um, we added, uh, dispensers for poop bags, for people who forget them. So we keep our park nice and clean. Uh, we, and we also planted a few trees. Um, as you can see here, the community, the, in the background, they raised beds for, and the garden was very successful, even though some, someplace we had a little bit too much rain. But, uh, we also have, uh, uh, wild fruits, bushes that people just go in the park, walk around a little bit and, and pick up blueberries. And, um, see here are some people, we have our, our bags there. Few trees, we're having a hard time with trees, but. This year, I'm, I'm here to ask, uh, for, uh, for support again. Um, we have a few issues in the park right now that you've helped with before. Uh, our walking path, because of the, the type of trees we have that's close to the walking path, the roots are coming up through the, the asphalt and causing a tripping hazard. And this has happened before. We, the city helped us with a, a section of the, of the path that was replaced with a much thicker asphalt, uh, so that the roots don't come through. Uh, so we'd like to have some support for, to repair those, a few sections. And, uh, we'd like also to finish, or to continue, uh, making the flower beds, uh, better. Uh, we have a few that, we redid one this year and for some reason, uh, weeds got in it. And this one here is way out of control, we have to redo it, so we have to, a couple to do, to do like this. This one here, the, for some reason, weeds got in it all completely, after redoing, so we have to redo it. So, um, and we'd like to purchase, um, more of these type of picnic tables because they require no maintenance, they're composite style, they're very expensive. But we can leave them on the pad year round and we don't have to, to, to paint them or do anything to them. And they're a safer type of, uh, of, uh, picnic table. We have issues with some trees that we have to take care of, that have been damaged in the storm. So we need the, some help there. We'll have to get some, some people that are more experts with trees to help us with that task. And a little bit of maintenance that we need to do on our shed and our, and our, our maintenance side of things. So I'm here this, uh, this evening to ask for the, the same amount of money as what you gave us last year, which would be five thousand dollars, which is, helps us to do whatever we, we need to do. We presently have, uh, a few thousand dollars left in the bank. And, uh, last year, we spent about thirty-three hundred dollars. So it kind of put everything, we have a little bit of operating budget. But to be able to go further and be able to buy what we need to, to buy, like an extra picnic table, and get a little bit of the work done on the other two flower beds, it'll require about, you know, five thousand dollars. So if, if, if the city is, uh, is, uh, planning their expenses or their budget or whatever, we'd appreciate to be considered for that amount. But like I said before, we take anything you guys have.
Okay. So five thousand for twenty twenty-four and the work for the paving, you would like for the city?
We'd like to, to see if, uh, maybe the, the crew on some slack time or at the end of the season, they did it last time at the end of the season. There's about twenty meters of, that has to be done. I don't know if they would, the, the parts that is becoming a tripping hazard is about ten meters. And the, the other small section that I, that the grass, the pave, the initial pave is so thin that everything's coming out, uh, uh, from under bottom. But if they would just, we don't need it all done at once, we, just so the guys end up with a, a small window of a day or two. Uh, it would be much appreciated.
Okay, perfect. Do we have any questions? No. Well, again, we'd like to thank all the volunteers that all work together. It is a beautiful park. Um, so, you know, giving back to the community and taking care of it and taking pride, and we know you guys have a lot of pride in that beautiful park. So thank you for all the work that you've been doing. And say thank you to, to all the volunteers on your group as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so we'll go to point three, municipal bylaws. So twenty twenty-three, Dajour seven, a bylaw regulating proceedings of municipal council for the city of Bathurst. Ms. Parker, I'm gonna give you the mic, hold on. Okay.
Thank you. Um, so I'm gonna kind of run into three point two also. Um, so what we did was with the recommendation of the lawyer with whom you had session with last year, um, he had recommended that we separate the code of ethics from our procedural bylaw, which is what you'll see, uh, tonight. Um, for three point one, which is the bylaw regulating proceedings of municipal council for the city of Bathurst. Uh, there are some changes that we are recommending, um, that will be brought, um, to another meeting for more information. As for the code of ethics, which is three point two, um, nothing was changed, it was just removed from the procedural bylaw into its own bylaw. Um, we did add a statement of commitment to the code of conduct, which is just a, a form saying that you have read it, you understand, and you would sign off. There was also a statement of complaint form that was created. Um, if in the conversations we, you do decide to, to proceed with the recommendations, um, we would try and get this passed and everything be effective for January first, twenty twenty-four.
Perfect. So we will definitely have, we'll talk about it some more as well, but just for this evening. Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Just, uh, thank you, Yourship. Just one issue with this. Um, I, I, I see they're proposing to switch our council meetings from Monday night to Wednesday nights. Myself and Mayor Chamberlain have regional service commission meetings on Wednesday night, so I don't know.
I've already spoke with them and they would be okay to move a night. We could, we can make arrangements. They are, they're flexible on their, it's just Wednesdays because of the Monday and Tuesday.
Okay.
But they'd be more than willing to be flexible. Okay, um, Deputy Mayor, uh, Councilor Burnett?
Uh, thanks, Madame Mayor. Uh, with the change to Wednesday, will people have to get information in by the Wednesday previous? Or if we, like, in the, uh, the paperwork that we received, they said if we stay with Monday, you have to get it in by Wednesday, but, uh, now can people get things in by Friday or Thursday if, if we're gonna have the meetings on Wednesday?
You're, you got the mic. Um, it would be preferred to keep the day as Wednesday, just to make sure that all documents are in. Um, it does happen, you know, things will slide in last minute, but to send out the package, we'd like to get that done before Friday. So we would need documents prior to.
Okay. The other thing I have is, uh, number six, uh, part six. Uh, the city clerk shall prepare the agendas of council. Um, and you're scratching out the part, we're subject to the approval of the mayor. So, Madame Mayor, would you not have anything to do with preparing the agendas?
We kind of work together on it.
But it says here that they wouldn't have to go to you in order to, uh, to, uh, have the agendas approved or the, so does that mean the staff would come up with the agendas for the meetings and, and not you?
Normally, what happens is whenever we have meetings, the department, so if it's the committee of a whole, or if it's a public meeting, or anything that needs for the reading, they come in and they say what needs to be done, and then we sit down together and then I say, yeah, okay, we're good to go.
So if we pass this by scratching out you in this part here, still will be okay?
I'm still gonna be involved. I do not see an issue with it, but if council does, we can keep it as status quo.
Okay, because your involvement is council's involvement, right? You bring to the table what council asks to have on the agenda?
Yes.
And if it says it doesn't have to go to you, uh, then how, how do we ensure that councils, we just get on the agenda?
All right, well, duly noted.
Thank you.
Perfect. Councilor Hondas?
Thank you, Madame Mayor. Um, the only worry I have for, for myself anyway is that I'm a proud member of the Kismen Club uh, since nineteen ninety-nine, and we meet on Wednesday, so uh, it's, they've already moved this meeting to Wednesday to accommodate me for council meetings being on Monday. So I can't ask them to do that again there, so, um, if, if it's, if it goes, it goes, and I'll have to make other arrangements, but I just don't find it fair for them to have to move their meetings again for me. I'm not saying they would there this time, but I'm just, I'm voicing that opinion on that, that particular item.
Okay, perfect. Councilor Burnett?
Uh, thanks, Madame. But we do lose quite a few meetings on Monday because of holidays and because, so maybe if it can't be Wednesday, could it be Tuesday?
Well, certainly as, 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 as a whole, we'll be able to discuss and pick a day, pick a day that would work for us in our discussion. I think what happens as well is that because of the Mondays and the holidays, and we're rushing to have everything for Friday, for Monday. This way, if I am able to have a different day, it would give the staff more time as well for last minute things that we run into play, so. But I'm sure together we could figure something out.
Thank you.
Okay. Conseiller Leblanc?
Merci, Madame la Maire est. Just rajouter à ça que pour l'instant, la majorité des comités qu'on est dessus se rencontrent presque toujours les mercredis aussi, ça fait que ça serait notre affaire. Là, t'auras plein de membres de comité qu'il faudra aussi ajuster leur calendrier, c'est que je comprends les, les points de vue là. Euh, mais si, si on peut pas le faire les mercredis, je pense qu'on serait préférable probablement de rester les lundis, sinon on demande à des centaines de personnes de changer leur agenda, juste mon opinion.
Perfect.
Merci.
Merci. Okay, we'll move on to city clerk again, Chiller Chamber of Commerce sponsorship.
Uh, so the Chamber of Commerce are hosting their annual Business Excellence Award Gala once again. Um, they have asked for a sponsorship. Sponsorships range from five hundred to five thousand. Um, I did include the, the printout, uh, on your desk, so you can see what, what it entails. Um, in the past years, we have sponsored at the civil level for a thousand dollars. So if, um, council is in agreement that you would like to remain at that amount, uh, we could bring that to next week's meeting.
Okay. Any objections with the thousand dollars for the sponsorship? No? Okay, all right, we're good to go. Well, this adjourns our meeting. Thank you everyone for being here with us and have a great evening.